Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
This is the public hearing of the committee of the whole regarding bills number 240-966, 240-967, 240-968, 240-969, 240-970, 240-971, 240-972, and 240-973. I want to thank everyone for being here today. Before calling the roll, I'd like to announce that we have translation services available for anyone present at today's hearing. If needed, please go to the table to my left. Services are being offered in Mandarin and Cantonese. Mr. Christmas, will you please call the roll?
Councilor Swill. Council Lady Gaudier. Councilman Jones. Councilman Young. Council Lady Lazada. Okay, that's you. Yes, ma'am. Councilman Driscoll. Council Lady Bass. Councilman Phillips. Councilman O'Neil. Council Lady Gilmore Richardson. Councilman Thomas. Councilman Harity. Council Lady Ahmad. Council Lady Landau. Council Lady Brooks. Councilman O'Rourke. Council President Johnson.
Present. A quorum of this committee is present and this hearing is now called to order. Mr. Christmas, will you please read the bill?
Bill 240-966, to grant the necessary authoriza-
Hold on a second. Chair recognizes the presence of Councilmember Mark Swiller.
Thank you, Councilman Swiller, Mr. President. Bill 240-966, to grant the necessary authorizations for the city to help facilitate development, construction, and operation of a new arena for the Philadelphia 76ers professional basketball team and for other uses, including authorizing the commissioner of public property and such other city officials as may be appropriate on behalf of the city to enter into the following agreements and take the following actions. Acquire fee simple title to all or portions of 1001 to 1025 Filbert Street, 1001 to 1019 Market Street, and 1025 Market Street together to Market and Filbert Street properties. Acquire fee simple title to other parcels of land, aerial areas, and subsurface areas in the vicinity of the Market and Filbert Street properties, including without limitation those areas reverting to the city or other parties in connection with the striking of certain aerial portions of 10th Street between Market Street and Filbert Street, the additional properties, and certain other nearby parcels and areas. Enter into a ground lease agreement with the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development under which the city would lease to pay all or portion of the Market and Filbert Street properties and the additional properties, if any, and other parcels and subsurface areas the city now owns in the vicinity of these properties, all of which collectively would constitute the arena site. Join in or consent to a sublease and development agreement, the sublease, between paid and either CBL Arena LLC, an entity affiliated with the Philadelphia 76ers LP, or another entity affiliated with the 76ers under which ArenaCo or other 76er-related entity would sublease the arena site and cause an arena to be constructed on it, including a multi-purpose sports and entertainment facility, an ancillary accessory, and related amenities, improvements in infrastructure, and agree to other related conditions. Upon the expiration or termination of the sublease or other circumstances set forth in the sublease, convey fee simple title to the arena site to pay for disposition to ArenaCo, grant accept amend relocate and extinguish easements, agreements, conditions, covenants, and restrictions encumbering or benefiting the arena site and any city-owned property adjacent to the arena site for the benefit of the arena site to facilitate construction and operation of the arena. Enter into a direct operating covenants agreement among the 76ers, pay in the city under which the 76ers agree to play substantially all of their regular season and playoff home games in the arena, and take all actions necessary and appropriate to accomplish the intent and purpose of this ordinance, all under certain terms and conditions. And Bill number 240-967, authorizing and approving the execution and delivery of a service agreement between the City of Philadelphia and the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development relating to the provision by the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development of certain project-related services to promote, among other things, the growth and expansion of business, commerce, and tourism within the City of Philadelphia in connection with the development of a multi-purpose sports and entertainment facility, including an arena to accommodate National Basketball Association games and family entertainment, community retail, and other uses. Authorizing and approving the obligation of the City of Philadelphia to pay in full when due the service fee and other amounts payable under the service agreement and covenanting to make necessary appropriations for such purposes. And authorizing the city officials to take necessary and appropriate actions to accomplish the intent and purpose of the ordinance, all under certain terms and conditions. And Bill 240-968, authorizing the revision of lines and grades on a portion of City Plan Number 307 by striking from the City Plan and vacating Filbert Street from 10th Street to 11th Street under certain terms and conditions. And Bill number 240-969, authorizing the revision of lines and grades on a portion of City Plan Number 307 by striking from the City Plan and vacating certain aerial portions of 10th Street between Market Street and Filbert Street under certain terms and conditions. And Bill number 240-970, authorizing CBL Arena LLC and its successors in interest to construct on and maintain various right-of-way encroachments in the vicinity of 1001 to 19th Market Street, 1025 Market Street, and 1001 to 1025 Filbert Street, Philadelphia, PA 19107, under certain terms and conditions. And Bill number 240-971, amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled zoning and planning by amending certain definitions relating to signs, creating an arena area within the Center City overlay district overlay, and making related changes, including a master plan requirement and changes to accessory sign controls, all in connection with zoning rules for proposed arena in Center City. And approving a master plan for the arena area, all under certain terms and conditions. And Bill number 240-972, amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled zoning and planning by revising certain provisions of Section 14906 entitled Market Street East sign regulations, all under certain terms and conditions. And finally, Bill number 240-973, approving the amendment of a neighborhood improvement district in the area generally bounded by and including 11th Street to the west, Filbert Street to the north, 8th Street to the east, and Market Street to the south, with the exception of certain condominium units at 801 Market Street condominium not included in the district, known as the Gallery Neighborhood Improvement District to remove certain portions of such property generally bounded by Filbert Street on the north, 10th Street on the east, 11th Street on the west, and Market Street on the south from such district in accordance with the provisions of the Community and Economic Improvement Act, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Christmas. Mr. Christmas, I want to thank everyone who's here today as we continue to evaluate the arena proposal. Just for the record, this is official hearing, so this is not a public comment session for individuals who have come down here today, but you can observe, we just ask that you be respectful of the legislative process. To my left, we are working with the Office of Civil Affairs, our Sheriff's Department, and the Philadelphia Police Department. We want to take a moment also to just acknowledge everyone for their due diligence and paying attention to this legislative process as we continue to move forward. At this time, I'm going to ask for Mr. Christmas to please call the first panel.
Alex Kaffenbaum, Senior Vice President and Head of Development, Harris Blitzer Sports Entertainment. David Gould, Chief Corporate Affairs Officer, Harris Blitzer Sports and Entertainment.
We also have on standby to answer questions from the administration, Michael Carroll, Deputy Managing Director for Transportation and Infrastructure, Sam Rose, Executive Vice President, Philadelphia Industrial Development Corporation. State your name for the record. Do you have a prepared statement, or we just going to go right into it, calling on members who asked for follow-up questions?
David Gould, Chief Corporate Affairs Officer, Philadelphia 76ers. Council President, we do not have a prepared statement, so we're ready to answer questions.
With that being said, the chair recognizes Councilmember Jones.
Thank you so much, Mr. President, and good morning to everyone.
Good morning.
I have three questions that I've asked consistently throughout these hearings. Number one is, what is the security plan for people visiting your arena that may travel along SEPTA, and to what degree are you collaborating to make sure that is a safe, enjoyable experience? That's number one. I'm going to get them all in before the time is out. The second one is, what is the economic development plan? And is it, so if you look at the vacancy rate that we've heard in testimony, that there should be a collaboration, although it is not your responsibility, but as a good neighbor, you should be concerned about the economic activities from Macy's to your footprint. One of the things that I think might be considered is that we can convert those vacant spaces into like a Philly Road, where indigenous businesses get a opportunity, sometimes a second opportunity, to experience that. And a caveat that those businesses do not compete with directly Chinatown businesses, and furthermore, give Chinatown businesses that might be displaced a first opportunity to move into those spaces. We found out through testimony that only 30% of the operating businesses actually own the buildings. So if there is a chance for a displacement, it'll come based on people who aren't operating businesses but yet own a business interest in the buildings. So finally, what I'd like to hear is a overall security plan that makes that visit to a Sixers game, one that is safe for indigenous residents and people that are visiting us. So those are my three questions. If you need PIDC to join you, if you need Mike Carroll to join you, feel free.
Thank you, Councilmember, for your question.
Mike.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Mike? Can't hear you. Okay, go now?
You good now?
No.
Testing. It's good. Okay. Thank you, Councilmember, for the question. To start on SEPTA security as well as their overall security plan, I'd like to call up Maureen Rush, our security consultant, to address that.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Councilman Jones, great question. Maureen Rush, I'm the security advisor for the 76ers Arena Project, and we have looked at security from the onset of the project. We have met and continue to meet with, the Center City District has very holistic bi-monthly group that meets, and it includes SEPTA Police, it includes Philadelphia Police, it includes security directors from the major operations and developments. It includes PATCO, and it even includes the federal law enforcement agencies. Jefferson Hospital has their own police department, as you're probably aware, working very closely with Keith Pritt, who is the chief of enterprise security for the entire Jefferson system. As you might know, that they are also looking to and working on a project, just spoke to Keith the other day, at 1101 Market Street, which will be a new headquarters for them. Their CEO wants them to be very visible at a street level. So that is, you know, the plans are developed, architectural plans. The Sixers want to be helpful in that we would like to work with them on a mini-station that would be, in fact, Keith and I are going to meet with some of the stakeholders in the next couple of weeks to make sure that everybody has kind of a seat at the table. And the purpose of that would be to keep that collaboration going. So SEPTA Police is extremely important, working with the chief to make sure that there is a, we're developing Safe Carters, so the Safe Carter zones would be well-lit, would have security technology, would have safety ambassadors, and would have police in the area. And every one of the Safe Carters has a mission, and that is to get people from their garages to the arena, from the arena to various restaurants in the area, you know, in our goal, which is to make the area vibrant, to help, you know, restaurants keep, you know, the pace of keeping people coming in before and after the game. All of that is in partnership and planning, and we are working as a team with the Philadelphia Police, obviously, as well, especially the Traffic Division, who have, you know, added their thoughts on, you know, pre- and post-game traffic issues. So that's pretty much the, you know, the exterior of the arena project.
One of the things that I'd like you to consider is, from Phillips District to President Johnson's District, you have on both ends of that subway parking. Fern Rock has a parking facility, am I right, member Phillips? That gets you down to the stadium. You park, you go. From going east or west to east, if you look at Milverne Station on 63rd Street, there is a big mall that is not operating during your basketball hours, that you can develop a relationship with, and if we are to achieve that 40% ridership, the best way is to have distance parking, get some security there so that cars aren't broken into, and get those ambassador tours to jump on the sub with everybody, and make that a pleasant entertainment and safe experience. So I'd like you to consider west to east security as well. And I don't know, Mr. President, I asked all my questions up front. Do you want me to wait, or you want them to answer?
They can answer.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Madam Chair, go ahead.
Yeah, so I think the other question that we have not addressed yet is around the redevelopment of Market East, Councilmember. So we wholeheartedly agree that, one, Market East needs to be revitalized for the betterment of our city in terms of increasing the tax base, providing jobs, and overall economic development, also providing a good quality experience for those who are visiting, tourists and otherwise. It's one of the reasons why we believe this project is going to be beneficial for the city overall, and we also know that for far too long, that has been a corridor that has underachieved from an economic development standpoint. And as a city, we really need to figure out what a viable solution to that is, knowing that there have been many attempts to address that, obviously unsuccessfully, given the current state of things. What I can say is Alex will go through the things that we can control and how we see this project contributing to that overall more prosperous vision. I do want to address your piece about local businesses. So one thing that we have done in anticipation of this dynamic and sort of shared goals along this front is partner with the African-American Chamber of Commerce to commission a research report, an effort that I believe councilmembers have received the recommendations, and that effort over the course of the past nine or so months illuminated a number of things that we need to be mindful of when we're trying to provide opportunities to local diverse businesses to prosper and be successful in an environment such as an arena or downtown area. So we will be taking all those recommendations and applying them to make sure that those businesses have opportunities at the sites that we control. I mean, Alex can talk a little bit more about what exactly that looks like and what sites we have control over and what our plans are for them.
This is, it's working? So I think it's a really great question.
It's not working? All right.
Wow. So it's a great question and one that is important to us. It's, the experience I hear describing is core to the fan experience that we want to achieve in order to be successful here. And so there's a few things that come to mind. One is starting with the design of the arena and designing that in a way that can act as an anchor to the surrounding neighborhoods from an activations perspective, and designing that arena with retail that's street-facing and open on non-event days or during non-event times. But then also, then, as you said, expanding that out, it's not just about the arena, it's about the corridor and the surrounding blocks. And so we, as we've previously stated, now have under control the properties on the south side of Market Street, on the adjacent block between 10th and 11th, as well as between 10th and 9th. So developing those with ground floor retail that can be activated and tenanted in the way that you describe is exactly what our plans are. We're also in touch with the local landlords that have other properties on the block, like you said, from Macy's, you know, not just to our property, but I think it continues all the way to all, in coordinating that effort. And, you know, one arena that we saw do a really good job of bringing local businesses from other parts of the city down to where the arena is, whether it's a second location or a rotating kiosk, was TD Garden up in Boston. So another arena built on top of a train station in the middle of downtown area, they had a very good story of the outreach they did for the different vendors, both in the arena and in the surrounding development that they controlled, to bring in a piece of the neighborhood from around the city. So a vendor from the northeast, or a vendor from the south, or, you know, a vendor that was out on the west side of the city, bringing them in and giving them a second location. And it's been, the response has been very positive from the city as well as the fans because people are coming from all of those locations, and they get either to try something from another part of the city that they haven't had the exposure to, or they get to see something that's familiar to them that they know they like.
Oh.
Does that answer your question, Councilman?
Yes, it does. I just want to remind us, Madam Chair, that Elon Musk described us as Gotham. What I'm asking you guys to do is to put together a Batman plan so that we don't have that kind of crime, that we don't have that perception of crime in our city, and for you to be good neighbors to help us develop it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilmen. Did you have some response? Okay. Chair recognizes Councilmember Brooks. Oh, okay, sorry. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gaudier.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I wanted to start by asking for updates on a few things. So first, can you tell us the status of your conversations with SEPTA? Have you nailed down a figure for the construction cost over Jefferson Station? Have you reconsidered sort of the position of not covering SEPTA's operating subsidies that would be needed to increase service at Jefferson Station? Have you moved at all on your position of not providing more than $50 million for the CBA? And then lastly, what is the status of an updated traffic plan that more carefully defines how traffic will be managed around this area with the addition of, you know, a near 19,000-seat arena? And does that traffic plan include a plan to get to 40% ridership?
Sure. I'll take this CBA question first, and then I'll pass it over to Alex for the SEPTA and transit questions. We are in conversations with Council President about the overall CBA number. Those conversations are active right now, so we don't have an overall answer, but they are, we are considering adjustments.
So I'll start with SEPTA, and we've had a number of conversations since we've been here last, as recently as yesterday afternoon, another one scheduled for this afternoon. We've been meeting weekly. We presented to them a very detailed overview from our construction managers of a phasing logistics plan that would detail how the protection would go into the station that would allow the station to continue to operate during the construction phase of the arena. That's obviously a preliminary plan, SEPTA is still reviewing it. The follow-meeting this afternoon is particularly to start talking about some of the feedback that they've had there, but the detailed plan was shown to them.
What detailed plan?
Sorry?
What detailed plan? Sorry.
It's a construction and logistics phasing plan, sort of showing how overhead protection and protected accessways could be installed in the station to allow for pedestrians and trains to continue to access the station during the construction phase.
Does the plan give you a better idea? I know that you've made an oral commitment to covering SEPTA's construction cost. At this point, do you have a better idea, or at least a range, of how much that construction would be, in a way that we could detail that in writing? And then what is your thinking now about the SEPTA operating cost issue?
So with regards to the construction costs, our commitment remains, we are committed to paying the cost of construction for modifications needed to Jefferson Station as a result of the arena. We are carrying that on our side of the ledger. In terms of the number that SEPTA provided, we don't have any further analysis or opinion on that number, but I can tell you that the number that we're carrying in our budget separate from that is significant, and, you know, tens of millions of dollars in terms of costs that we are bearing to continue the operations of the station during construction. So in regards to, sorry, do you have a question?
Oh, I'm just processing what you're saying. Can you talk to the operating cost?
Sure. So with regards to operating costs, our position remains that we are looking to be treated the same as the other teams and private entities within the city. We have, though, spent a considerable amount of time reviewing the document that SEPTA provided. We hired a consultant, KCI Consulting, which has got direct knowledge, one of the partners, Jeff Knoppel, former GM of SEPTA, to help us understand some of the issues that are being presented. We are continuing to look at those operating issues and what's driving the costs. We presented to SEPTA, as recently as yesterday, some ideas of how that operating cost could be lowered, things like staging trains on one of the platforms in Jefferson Station because of the time of day, and using the other platform for throughput, things like other yards that are, rail yards that are, you know, a couple miles outside of the vicinity of Jefferson Station, but potentially close enough to be able to stage trains, to be able to come in a manner that would help serve the needs of the arena demand, as well as things like, you know, is the cost accounting for the reduced service on the Broad Street Line down to the sports complex because of the events that are no longer happening there? And then lastly, a piece about scheduling. So one of the things that is included in SEPTA's operational estimate is the cost of running trains, more trains, on event days and non-event days. So to us, the idea that running empty trains on 10:30 at night just because, you know, feels like there's a better way to do that, we don't know the answer there, but we are working to say, hey, we know when our schedule is, and we can provide many months' advance notice of our scheduled events, and so how can we work together with you so that we're providing service when it's needed, but not providing service when it would otherwise be empty?
And is there an updated traffic plan, as was requested some time ago?
So the traffic impact study continues to evolve. We've had a number of meetings with PennDOT, Streets Department, SEPTA on the most recent submission. We are preparing a final version of that draft for resubmission imminently that would then go back through the standard review process. then go back through the standard review process through those agencies.
Thank you. And just in closing, I would say, on the issue of fairness, the only thing I would note is that the other teams aren't asking for an arena before we have a sustainable funding plan for SEPTA. And I continue to think that this is an issue that has to be figured out before we give this a yes. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and I could not agree with you more. I think that, you know, we've heard you state before that you wanted to be treated the same as everyone else, but what you're doing is something that's very different from what everyone else has done. And so to not take into account the cost associated with what you're proposing and, you know, somehow suggesting that, you know, you should be treated the same as the stadiums down, you know, down, you know, in the arena district or the stadium district, whatever, you know, it's just, it's beyond me. Like, I don't, I don't know how you can think that you should be looking at the exact same deal, the exact same deal, or the exact same set of circumstances, because it's just really not. So I don't know if you want to respond to that, but I just, you know, you know, following up on the Councilwoman's questions, I just really wanted to put that out there because I heard it, you know, I heard it a few times before when you all were here.
Yeah, so we appreciate that that sentiment, and I do want to make sure we're on the record saying that we understand that SEPTA has an incredible challenge ahead of them, not just for, not just for our project, but for their overall operations moving forward, right? We're aware that they don't have a long-term funding solution right now. Fortunately, they were able to have a stopgap facilitated by the governor, but we know that that only lasts through, I believe, the current fiscal year. And so we know that as they're grappling with this, they're also grappling with a much more existential challenge as well that could impact the other teams and other businesses throughout the region. We also appreciate that the reason why SEPTA is so important to the region and why everybody's so focused, this body included, on getting a sustainable funding solution for them is because it's so vital to the operations of the city so people can get to work and the overall economic growth and prosperity of Philadelphia as well as as well as the greater region. We feel like this project is one that will add to that prosperity, add to the economic growth. And just like other businesses and operations and teams in the city depend on SEPTA for people to get to and from their events, whether it be 2026, whether it be when the Pope gets here, or whether it be just normal course of business to games or to work or whatever it may be, that we fall into that that overall equation in terms of the benefits we would be bringing to the to the region. And again, we, as everybody else, depend on SEPTA to make that possible.
Absolutely. Well, thank you for that, you know. I'll just leave it there. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Next up, Councilman Harity.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you. And thank you, guys, for coming in to testify again. Glad to hear that you're still in the process of going over the CBA and looking at it and trying to figure out, I guess, for lack of a better term, some wiggle room on different things. Through conversations with my colleagues, I found that most of them agree with me that the money for the Business Disruption Fund is nowhere near enough. I did a rough estimate of the businesses that I thought would be affected and came up with about 120. The testimony of, I forget who it was, but said that their number, and this was from the community, their number of businesses that would be affected would be about 130. You know, I've said it before, I believe that giving somebody who's struggling, a business who's struggling, another payment is not going to help anybody.
Excuse me, Councilman. Can we just speak right into the microphone?
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Giving a business that's going to be already struggling another payment just doesn't really make sense to me. My opinion is that it should be a grant that they could draw down on these businesses, say, for a rough number of about $10,000 a year for five years, which would be about $50,000 per business. Estimating a little high, just in case we missed anybody, at about 150 businesses, that would be approximately $7.5 million. There's a big gap there. Would like to know if there's any way that we could try to fix that gap.
Yeah. Thank you, Councilman, for the question, and appreciate your focus on this issue, as I know we discussed it last time we were here. As I mentioned, we are, you know, considering adjustments to the CBA, I think, in conversations with this body as well as, you know, with the administration. I just want to make sure we're on record saying that we take the feedback that we get from this body very seriously, which is why we're taking those things into consideration. So this absolutely should be something that we're willing to, you know, discuss as we as we move forward in terms of what what that would look like. So the short answer is yes, and I think we need to have further conversations to figure out exactly what the right structure is.
That's, that's good to hear because it's a nice positive change from the last time our conversations happened. You know, and I believe that we can build a stadium and protect Chinatown at the same time.
That's our goal.
Through a lot of different things that, you know. But I'm just glad to see that now there is wiggle room and there is still negotiation. And, you know, I, I look forward to hearing what our Council President and the administration come up with next so that we can move on from this. So thank you for that, and thank you for, I guess, changing your mind and giving us a little wiggle room to work with this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilmember O'Rourke.
Thank you, Madam Whip, and good morning.
Good morning.
I have a couple of questions. I don't know if I can.
Councilman, your mic, I think.
Don't yell at me.
We got action.
There you go.
I have a few questions of my own, but also my leader had to go, but I wanted to ask some of what she had as well. So first, she wanted to offer thanks to you all for coming back and speaking with council today, and wanted to state that these conversations should have really started really months ago in her case, if not years ago, because the body's approval over the plan, but she does look forward to the discussion. First question that she wanted to ask was, it was pretty clear yesterday that City Council was not prepared to approve this legislation without further discussion of the CBA, so this is a little bit of what Councilman Harity already talked about, but I want to go with what she said. There's not been a lot of discussion about what we could gain in revenue if the billionaire owners paid property taxes like regular Philadelphians. Independent analysts have said that our city and school district could receive $450 million without this giveaway. The $50 million CBA doesn't come close to this. What's stopping you right now from committing to this City Council to work with us to develop a new CBA of at least $300 million, still far short of the $450 million?
I would say that, as I mentioned, we are in conversations for adjustments to the CBA. I can also say that a $300 million CBA would be far beyond what we were able to do and would make the project economically non-viable.
Thank you. And when you all announced that your intention to include a community benefits agreement when they started publicly proposing the stadium, the number that they used, that you used, was $50 million, what changed in the community benefits agreement between the initial proposal and the one that is under consideration in City Council now? Specifically, what input did you incorporate from community organizations?
We are still in conversations in terms of what that would look like, and so, I mean, as I mentioned, last time we were here, a large, we've had numerous conversations with community stakeholders from when we announced the project in July of 2022, and we continue many of those conversations in the instance of stakeholders in Chinatown in particular, the ones that we were in contact with preferred to communicate through Council Member Squillen. And so as far as those are concerned, we are working with this body as far as input there.
I'll say these and then go on. If there's another round, I'll try to get some more in. How did the Sixers organization come to the $50 million figure when it relates to the CBA? And the pilot only pays about $2.5 million per year to the school district. That basically covers the per pupil cost for about 150 students per year based on the 2023 school budget. If we did not let the billionaire owners avoid property taxes, the school district would get $224 million in funding over 30 years. Do you all think that this is a good deal for Philadelphia students who are facing school closures, asbestos, lack of basic items like air conditioners?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember. I would say we absolutely think that this is a good deal for the school district. We've heard from members in this body and members of the community how important finding funding for the school district is, in particular because of the challenges that you just mentioned, which we agree with, and we think that, you know, finding funding for them is very important. I think it's important to note that in addition to the pilot payment, there are projections of about $200 million generated from this project to go towards the school district. As we know, school district revenue is not just from property tax revenues, but other other revenue streams from the city as well, which this project would also contribute to. If you look at what the site right now currently contributes to the school district versus what it would contribute after the development of the arena, it would be orders of magnitude larger. And so for that reason, we think that this is a project that is good for the city because we know that we need projects like this to create a tax base that funds our schools.
Thank you, Councilman. We'll come back.
Oh, thank you. Sorry.
Thank you, Councilman. We'll come back. You know, just following up on that in terms of the school district and if this is a good deal, and how you, you know, make those kind of determinations, can you talk about community involvement? I asked that question at the last hearing about what was the Sixers level of involvement and sort of like the give back to the city of Philadelphia, because I remember there were, you know, there was nothing prepared, there was no readily available information, and to the best of my knowledge, there's not, not a whole lot. So can you talk about that a little bit?
Absolutely. Thank you for the question, Councilmember.
Sure.
So over the course of the last 12 months, we have a variety of programs that have impacted over 25,000 community members. That includes 197 clinics or activations within communities. We have over 12,500 youth registered in our Junior 76ers program, and we've also supported over 150 organizations through marketing assistance, in-kind advertising value educational programs, and other tools for those businesses to succeed. We have, last year, we gave away roughly 7,700 tickets to 76ers games. We also philanthropically contributed almost $2.9 million in grant contributions. Our staff has also contributed over 1,500 hours of community service. In addition to that, we are very proud to operate the 76ers Youth Foundation, which last year gave away roughly $2 million. The Youth Foundation has given away roughly $5 million since its creation.
When was it created?
I'm sorry.
When was it created?
I believe the Youth Foundation was created just before the pandemic. I think it was 2018 or 2019. I can confirm that for you, though, Councilmember. And the giving of the 66ers Youth Foundation has increased each year, so it's been a growing amount in terms of our philanthropic commitment there. In addition to that, from our ownership group, they've also been engaged philanthropically. Just one example is between all of our ownership members, over $7 million to the Philadelphia Youth Basketball Organization and the creation of their youth center. That includes a $6 million capital campaign gift from the Edelman family. Josh Harris, one of our owners, as we mentioned last time we were here as well, made a $10 million investment in Mosaic, a local black-owned developer, to help grow their business in support of local community development and businesses. Last year, we gave out roughly, I want to say, $75,000 towards anti-gun violence programs throughout communities across the city.
How much was that?
$75,000.
For anti-gun, $75,000?
Mm-hmm. And then in addition to that, we've funded, I want to say, roughly $50,000, no, I'm sorry, $70,000 for additional youth basketball programs and clinics throughout the city this this past summer. So those are some examples of the work that we've done throughout the city and are very proud of of things like that. In addition to that, we also have a number of internship programs. One example is the Marcus Graham Project, where we take local, specifically African-American youth, and put them through a marketing program where they can learn from the marketing experts within our organization, because that's a career that they're that they're interested in. We also had a program with MIT and Chaney for a sports analytics boot camp that we held on our site in Camden that included Chaney students as well. So those are, those are some examples of of the things that we do throughout the community that we are, we're very proud of, and we plan to continue doing them as the Philadelphia 76ers.
What's the value of the Philadelphia 76ers today?
According to Forbes, the overall value of the team is $4.6 billion.
$4.6 billion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. And I ask that because when I look at, you know, the value of $4.6 billion and the $70,000 citywide given to community involvement, youth basketball programs, and some of the other, you know, a couple of dollars here, a couple of dollars here, you know, it's not particularly inspiring.
And a few million too, but but I appreciate it.
A very few million.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, a very few million. So more could be done, but I'm sure we'll be having those conversations.
Indeed, and I would say we are also proud of what we do in comparison to all the other teams in the market as well.
Say again?
I said, we are very proud of what we do, including this community benefits agreement relative to the other teams in the market as well.
Okay. All right. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Landau.
I just want to follow up again, maybe more detail. I appreciate so much the questions that my colleagues are asking, but I'm a little stunned that you're coming back here without answers to our questions again. These bills, this timeline is your timeline, this location is your location, you want it so bad that we introduced bills on October 24th that we only started hearings, I think, around November 12th. You were here last, testifying to us on November 14th. We asked all these questions on November 14th. We're following up on the same questions we asked, and we still don't have answers to the questions that we need answered in order to even decide whether we can go forward on this. And these are simple things. These are things about, oh, can you increase the community benefits agreement? How much are we going to give to SEPTA? SEPTA has been clear. The Impact Study that was paid for from the city said we need 40% of the riders to come on SEPTA. SEPTA has come back and said we need X amount of money in order to make that happen, and we ask you where you are on that, and you don't have an answer. This is your timeframe. I have to tell you, it is incredibly frustrating from our perspective that we're being rushed and we don't have the answers to our questions. So I'm going to give you an example of something and see if we can get to the same idea of how you can understand how important this is. I know you've been a part of the Wells Fargo Center. I know that part of your deal at the Wells Fargo Center is to pay a portion of the facilities upkeep. I know you just had your locker rooms and stuff updated. You've had a full update of your facilities. Were you given a cost of your portion before you went, before you agreed to let the locker room enhancement and the Wells Fargo enhancement go forward?
Appreciate the sentiment and understood. With regards to locker rooms, we paid for that entirely ourselves. That was an investment that...
Just to be clear, I'm basically asking you, if you want to buy a bike, do you just say, I'll take this bike at any number? Or do they give you the cost of the bike first so you can decide if you want to buy a bike? And so my question is not, did you pay for the locker rooms? The question is, did you get the cost of the locker rooms first, or just said, go ahead, just go do whatever you want to do and give us a bill later because we're just happy with it?
Yeah, understood. Thank you for the question, Councilmember. We received estimates before before we started.
Thank you. I am done. Please get us our answers immediately. This timeline is not fair, it is not respectful, it is wrong, and we want answers to our questions.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Gauthier.
In previous testimony, I believe that you stated that you met your, quote, "legal commitment" to Camden in response to criticism that you created only 11 jobs there. However, so I wanted you to talk more about that and talk about, is there a legal commitment to the amount of jobs that you're pledging here in Philadelphia with the construction of this arena? And what is that legal commitment?
Sure. Thank you for the question, Councilmember. I believe all the commitments that we have around participation as it pertains to jobs, both on the construction side as well as the operating side, are laid out in the Economic Opportunity Plan, which we, you know, is enforceable by the city. And I know that there have been conversations in terms of increasing some of the enforcement mechanisms, excuse me, mechanisms for the Economic Opportunity Plan. So that would be the vehicle by which we would, I think we would gauge that because that also includes local participation, which would be jobs and contract opportunities for Philadelphians.
I think what I'm more so trying to parse out is, you know, there was a job commitment with this facility in Camden, right? And the job, but what happened was that there were 11 jobs resulting. I want to understand more what you meant by having met your legal commitment, and I want to understand how that relates to what we're setting up here in Philadelphia.
Understood. Thank you, Councilmember. I'm not aware of a commitment for a certain number of jobs that we were committed to in Camden.
Was it more than 11?
I don't think there was a specific commitment for a number in Camden.
Okay. I find that hard to believe. I don't have the information at my fingertips. But, and because I don't, I'll have to take you at your word. But can you talk about what you see as your legal commitment to the jobs that are being promised here in Philadelphia?
Sure. Again, I think our commitment is to make sure that the jobs that we create as a result of this project, we maximize the economic opportunity created by them, which means that we are providing opportunities for folks who are typically underrepresented in, whether it be various employment opportunities, contract opportunities for both the construction operations of this project. That also includes a local commitment in terms of participation through the Economic Opportunity Plan. And so, that would be the mechanism through which we'd be held accountable to that, which there was not one, I believe, you know, with those laid out in Camden.
There wasn't an EOP in Camden?
It predated my time with the team. But again, my understanding is that there was no specific commitment to the number or percentage of local jobs. I believe there's a commitment to making sure that we have a certain number of people working in the Camden facility, but not necessarily where they resided.
I wasn't asking where they reside. I was asking about the amount of jobs you created.
Okay. I'm sorry. When you referenced 11 Camden residents...
Oh, I understand what you're saying. Okay. Did you make, and you don't have information about the amount of local jobs you promised or pledged in Camden?
And again, I don't believe that there was a commitment for a specific number of jobs going to Camden residents as a result of that development.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Even if, you know, just even if there was not a specific number of jobs that were committed to or promised, the idea that there were 11... How many, how many jobs in total were created out of this facility? 200 and...
Camden, roughly 200, I think.
200, 200-plus jobs. And the idea that 11 went to local residents in a community that is struggling, that is primarily Black and Brown, and that there doesn't seem to be any sort of, you know, outrage, concern, "We should do better" from the Sixers. Can we hear something like that?
You know, appreciate the question, Councilmember, and an opportunity to expand on that. So we are doing outreach. We have a partnership with Rutgers Camden. We also have committed $1 million to local job training programs through organizations in partnership with America Starfin in Camden to help increase the number of Camden residents that are employed by us at that facility. One thing that is unique about our operations in Camden are that the vast majority of those jobs are highly specialized and require a very specific type of training, whether it be, you know, our legal department, our finance department, or, you know, more, a better example of that would be like our team operations, which is a lot of the jobs over there. Our front office, our trainers, sports analytics, et cetera.
So how many of the jobs at the new arena, if we built 76 plays, would be specialized jobs that will require, you know, maybe higher, you know, educational requirements?
Right.
Or degrees or... How many jobs created would fit into that category?
The minority of them would. I don't have a specific number, but the jobs created at the arena, I think one thing we're excited about is that they would be far more accessible than the jobs that were created over in Camden.
So is that because the main hub of the Philadelphia 76ers would remain in Camden?
That's correct.
So for the jobs that are here, they would not be higher-paying wages? Is that what you're saying or...?
I'm saying that there are different types of jobs required to operate on operations such as a basketball arena and entertainment venue. And so, you have a greater diversity of jobs, number one. Probably more jobs overall, but also they would be more accessible. We don't have those types of jobs in our Camden operation based on the nature of the work there.
Okay. All right. We're going to come back to that.
Okay.
We're going to come back. Councilman O'Rourke.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'm back. Thank you again, gentlemen, for coming back. I wanted the stress, as has already been lifted up by Councilwoman Landau.
Speaking to the microphone, Councilman.
Can you hear me? How about, how about now? Okay. The decisions that we're making today, that we'll make around this, will have lasting consequences for our city, as we've already articulated. And it's essential that we address every outstanding concern thoroughly and transparently before moving forward, as Councilwoman Landau lifted up. Our office asked in writing, and actually, you know what? Can the administration come up or is that a different panel, Madam Chair? Next panel? Let me ask here. Harris Blitzer Sports and Entertainment LLC owns several stadiums and practice centers. How much public subsidies in total does Harris Blitzer Sports and Entertainment LLC receive under its contracts?
Sorry, can you repeat the question, Councilman?
Harris Blitzer Sports and Entertainment LLC owns several stadiums and practice centers. How much public subsidy in total does Harris Blitzer Sports and Entertainment LLC receive under its contracts?
How much public subsidy do we receive under its contracts? I don't know the answer to that relative to, but we can follow up and get you that information. I don't have a specific figure at my fingertips.
Thank you. Harris Blitzer Sports Entertainment LLC have a larger stake in this proposed arena than just the 76ers. In other cities, we can assume the LLC with the new stadium is going to work to pull music events away from the Comcast South Philly Sports Center. What other interests beyond the 76ers would the LLC stand to profit from with the new arena?
Sorry, could you repeat the last portion of the question? I want to make sure I answer it.
What other interests beyond the 76ers would the LLC stand to profit from with the new arena?
Beyond just 76ers games, is that...
What other interests beyond the 76ers would the LLC stand to profit from with a new arena?
The surrounding development that we've talked about for the south side of Market Street would be developments that would be conducted by the same LLC.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I want to acknowledge the presence of Councilwoman Isaiah Thomas. And next up is Councilwoman Ahmad.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning.
Good morning.
Wanted you to walk us through the games that are scheduled for the proposed arena and other events that are proposed, and who would be responsible for that? And what is happening the rest of the time? Meaning, this whole process was entertained because we wanted to revitalize...
Market Street.
Yeah, Market Street. And so, just having games at night is not enough, right? And as a community partner, we expect that entire time to be revitalized because that will bleed into people feeling safe, you know, crime, cleanliness, all of that. So can you tell us who's responsible for what? And how you envision that space to be occupied during the day, during night? And what have you done to actually put our infrastructure in place for revitalizing Market Street?
Sure. Thank you for the question. It's an important one and one that we've given a lot of thought to. So we would be responsible for all operations of the arena, including not just basketball games, but the booking of shows. That includes concerts, family shows, comedy shows, other types of events. So everything that's happening at the arena would be our responsibility to book, manage, et cetera.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I was going to say, outside of that, the common space that is underneath the arena, how are you developing that? And because you'll still be owning that space and renting or doing whatever, leasing that space. What is that plan?
That's correct. And so, we would look to, first, we look to design the building in a way that helps activate the street, as you said, not just on event days or even event times, but all throughout the day and throughout the year. So that means putting, raising the event floor. So a previous iteration has had the event floor one level below grade. That caused a lot of different issues and concerns. We've since raised it above the street level, which allowed us to program the street level with retailers that could be open, A, to the general public and street-facing, but B, throughout the course of the day. So that could be things like restaurants or coffee shops or stores that help bring people there or give people a reason to be there.
So that sounds great because this would be the same thing I would say. But what is the commitment level? And what is the actual granular detail about that? Because we are signing off on something potentially that means the ball is in your court. And if we don't hold you accountable, we don't know what you're going to do. We just heard about Camden and, you know, the lack of investment in certain spaces, right? So we're just looking at track record and we're looking to see, you're saying these things. And I don't mean to say you're lying, but I'm just a person who wants transparency and accountability as to how we are signing off a space with so much potential to you. So I would like to know what is the commitment level? What is the accountability process? And how granular will be this plan? And where would that be? I have not seen that as of yet.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Jones. Yes, speaking to the mic, Councilman. He's on. You, sir. Who's Ruse? No. Not mine. Wait, can she, can you hear her? She can't, hold on, Councilman. The stenographer can't hear you. Hold on. Any minute now. We're going to have a brief recess for a couple minutes while we work on our technical issues. So please don't go anywhere, anybody. Five minutes? Okay, a five-minute recess. Thank you. Thank you for your patience. We will proceed. I think Councilwoman Jones was making a statement.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Member Ahmad, for this point of information. Remember Ahmad's question, I don't think was clearly answered. Out of a 365-day-year, 12-month-a-year calendar, what percentage of time will there be a basketball game, concert, or other event open?
Thank you for that. So our estimates are for 150 events a year. The vast majority of those are evenings. There are a handful that are weekends, things like some family shows that happen during the daytime on the weekends, excuse me, as well as a couple of basketball games throughout the course of the year that are daytime basketball games. The majority of them are evenings.
So clarification for the record. Out of a 12-month-year, 11 months of the year? 300 days a year? How much?
So in terms of events, as Alex mentioned, roughly 150 events per year. So that would be 150 days/nights out of the year. Beyond that, and one of the reasons why the ground floor retail component was created, which I think was part of Councilmember Ahmad's question as well, is we want to make sure that regardless of whether or not there's an event, that the site is active and contributing to the revitalization of East Market Street. We know that there's going to be, you know, hustle and bustle when you have events and you have concertgoers and, you know, fans there. But the question that we received a lot of attention on is what happens when there's not an event? When we initially announced the project, the ground floor of the arena was at grade, so at street level. And we received concerns because they said, "Well, does that create enough room for ground floor retail to make sure that there is that activity?" So in response to that feedback, we elevated the event level of the arena to the second floor. That creates more room for ground floor retail as well as pedestrian access, public pedestrian access, both north-south as well as east-west. So there will be interior and exterior-facing retail. So it should feel like any other block or street that's vibrant in Center City, regardless of whether or not there's an event.
And I think also importantly, an improvement from the current condition, which is the mall, which is very inward-facing, right? There's only select places to enter and exit the mall. It's designed really to bring people in and keep them in versus allowing porosity. And so, that's a key element of what we would plan to change as part of our design. And to go back to your question... And to go back to your question of, you know, sort of what kind of accountability do we have to this along the way? So there are a number of different checks throughout the course. One, within the lease agreement, there's an obligation for a minimum amount of retail square footage and linear footage at the street level. That's going to evolve as the design evolves, right? As we've said, the design is still being formulated. And so exactly where it goes, we'll move around. But there is an ongoing obligation for us to provide that. There's also things like the civic design review that we went through. Our commission will have purview over the project as we go on. SEPTA is going to have ongoing review and approval rights with regards to the design. And all of those things combined, we think, provide the checks and balances that you're looking for. And I would also add that we are naturally incentivized to do what we're saying we're gonna do and what you're asking, because for us, this all hinges on being able to be successful in the same way that you're asking.
So thank you for that. You mentioned that it is in the lease that there's a commitment. In our term sheet, we don't see that. So could you elaborate on that? What exactly is in the lease around the accountability of providing this level of engagement during the off-times? And secondly, when there's a development, you usually need to have things leased out before you get your financing. So I don't know how much of this part will account for the total financing, but when you have, you know, when you're doing a retail space, you have to say, who's gonna go into those spaces before the first-position lender is going to give you anything. So I don't, that's what I'm asking for. How detailed and baked is this in order for it not to be an afterthought, to say, oh, we gotta do this, so we will? But it is part and parcel of the planning outside of just the immediate arena, as to who will be those partners? Who are you leasing out to? What kind of businesses will they be? And that's going to be how you're getting your financing. So I just wanted to know where that is in the lease, because we have not seen that in the term sheet.
Sure, all good questions. I do believe that in the term sheet, the outline for the minimum of square footage for retail space is outlined. It's 10,000 square feet. There's also an outline for the amount of linear footage, so street-facing space. So we can't just have like a doorway and then have it put into the back of the arena. So I do believe that that is in the term sheet in terms of those lease obligations. We can clarify and confirm for you, though. With regards to the, sorry, did you?
Yeah, go ahead.
So with regards to specifics of tenants and when those are tenants identified and who they are, with respect, it is too early for that to happen. That is typical for any new development project. You are correct that lenders will wanna know, you know, what are the viability of leasing it, but it is not usually standard for you to have spaces leased prior to starting construction or prior to starting or getting your finance. Those things typically happen, particularly for tenants that are smaller. They wanna make their decisions when it's closer to being able to occupy the space.
But you have some letter of agreement and understanding. This is just to say, again, the accountability piece of, yes, you have broad strokes in there, but we all know devil is in the details. And this whole space has fallen apart because maybe these safeguards were not in there in the first iteration. So that's the question of where this, this will be amended to reflect so that we have some assurance and guarantee that this is going to come out in a way that is a 24, maybe not 24/7, at least 27 engagement for this streetscape in order for this to be successful in revitalizing Market Street. So I'm just putting that there, that that is needed. We can figure out how we get that, but right now, this is not sufficient. Just letting you know. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilmember Phillips.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Earlier, you mentioned, David, about the correlation between the Sixers' arena and providing economic viability to the city, particularly around even our schools, right? According to data that's projected from what was presented, in two, over a 30-year period, Citizens Bank Park Arena had, is supposed to generate around $28 million. Lincoln Financial Field generates $41.7 million. And then this proposed arena is supposed to generate over a 30-year period, $130, $153 million for the School District of Philadelphia. Can you talk more about like those numbers and other benefits the School District of Philadelphia is gonna get from what you're projecting the arena will have, impact will have?
Sure, thank you for the question. So if you were looking for specifics about how we got to our estimates, I'm happy to have our consultant, Max from Municap, come up and talk about the analysis that was done. Our estimates project that over the course of 30 years, there would be the $200 million net new tax revenue generated towards the school district.
Yeah, yep, that'd be a good.
Yep.
Hi, thank you, Councilman Max, the Vice President at Municap. So for our school district tax revenue projections, we looked at three different revenue streams. It was real estate taxes and the arena pilot. It was liquor taxes and use and occupancy taxes with the use and occupancy settlement payment. So those are the three different revenue streams that make up the $200 million.
Thank you. Do you know how that compares to other cities when it comes to the school district revenue, based off of an arena?
I don't, I don't think we know specifically in terms of how that would compare to other cities, but, you know, what you just referenced in terms of what we'd be generating relative to other venues that are actually much larger than, in terms of capacity than ours, I think we're very happy and proud about the amount of tax revenue this would be generating for the Philadelphia School District.
And I think a key component of that is that's net new tax revenues. That's accounting for activity that already takes place in the city of Philadelphia, which the city is already accumulating tax revenue for. It's not double-counting that. This is just net new by way of the project, and it does not account for anything that happens outside of our arena. So any, any economic activity happening at local restaurants, bars, hotels, transit, none of that is part of that number. This is just inside the four walls of our venue.
Thank you. And that was 200 and?
Roughly $200 million for the school district, $800 million for the city.
Okay, awesome. And then lastly, just had this last question.
Councilmember, one other thing, too, is this, in addition to it not happening, what happens off-site, I don't believe this is accounting for other revenue streams, so it's a conservative estimate. So I don't think it's accounting for things like liquor-by-the-drink tax, which would also generate revenue for the school district as well. So just to say that this is a, it's a, I think, a very laudable number, but it's still a very conservative estimate.
Okay. Just have one additional question for most part. The other weekend, I was able to read the African-American Chamber of Commerce Black Owned Business Report. And ultimately, I just wanna understand is, the 40%, of all the black businesses that are gonna be with the arena that you've committed to, how do you plan to sustain these black-owned businesses within the arena to make sure that they are, you know, at the forefront of the concession stands and so forth? And how many jobs are you projecting from that?
Sure. I don't have a specific jobs number on that, because there'll be various different types of businesses. I just haven't done that analysis, so we can look at that and get back to you. In terms of how we plan to sustain them and get them in, I will say, we are looking to act on the recommendations that are laid out in the report. I think the best way to illustrate what that could look like is to actually take a tangible example of something that we have done, which I think, again, is illustrative of what we're trying to do on an even broader scale. So as we've mentioned before, we operate the Prudential Center up in Newark, and we are of similar efforts in terms of diversifying our vendor base up there as well. One example is, and this is just to kind of paint the picture of what a business may expect and how you would go through it. Through a, through a project that we had up in New York City, we got introduced a few years ago to a woman named Melba Wilson. Melba owns and operates a very well-known soul food restaurant in Harlem. We ended up building a really great relationship with her. She's a very proud black-owned, I'm sorry, black business owner. And she expressed to us that as she's looking to grow her business, fast casual is sort of the thing that she sees as the next step to how she expands her brand and her business. And obviously, as a sports entertainment company that operated arena, we started having conversations in terms of what, what that could look like. She had never operated in that kind of venue before when we started the conversations with her. Over the course of about two and a half years, we worked with her to better understand what her goals were, introduce her to the operations and the operator within the Prudential Center. We took a lot of time to figure out what the right, how we could structure the deal in a way that made sense for her, given that she was a smaller business relative to a lot of the other operators that tend to be in that type of venue. And last season was the first season that Melba's was in the Prudential Center, and so she opened up a stand on the Upper Concourse. She did extremely well last season. We're expanding her footprint this year. She's actually looking to expand her operations in Newark more broadly as well, in part as a result of our, of our partnership. But the way that we got there was through working very closely with her, being very flexible in terms of how we do business with a smaller business. And now we're talking about how we continue to expand her footprint throughout other properties that we operate. That story and that example is what we're trying to replicate on a much broader scale with 76th Place. And so the bottom line is it takes investment, it takes time, it takes attention, it takes intentionality and commitment, and relationship-building. And through our partnership with the African-American Chamber and businesses they've already worked with and reached out to that we know are interested in this, we're gonna start that process right now, because I think the punchline there is it takes time and years in advance to really be able to succeed there, which is why we're starting right now, years before we start construction, let alone we open.
And thank you. And I just wanna quickly ask this, promising my final question. If the, if I can, if the Sixers would be able, what would compel, if the Sixers did not, a lot of people have been asking this a little bit, it's very important to get this out there. If the Sixers were to not receive, would get this arena potentially passed by council, would that end all discussions about the idea of potentially moving to another location outside of Philadelphia?
I'm sorry, would it end all?
Would it end the discussions, if you get this, if this was to pass through council, right, the arena, would this end all discussions about moving outside, moving anywhere other than Philadelphia?
If we, our priority is to play here, and if we get legislation approved that allows us to build an arena in, on Market East, our goal and intention and commitment would be that we are playing in Philadelphia, yes.
And what would compel the Sixers to move to New Jersey?
We have been trying to identify a new home for us to play in 2031 for the better part of almost five years now. The initial proposal was down at Delaware River Waterfront. Obviously, we're talking about this here. 2031 is getting closer and closer, and we need a place to play. And so if we are not able to come to an agreement for this site, the only other viable option that we have as of right now is in Camden, New Jersey, based on Governor Murphy's proposal and pursuit of us. And so that, the short answer is, we need a place to play in 2031, and that is the viable option that we, that we have in front of us if this should not move forward.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilmember Jeffrey Young.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Listening to the testimony earlier, and a number was brought up, I believe it was Councilmember O'Rourke, where he mentioned like a $300 million number, and your response is that that number is not viable economically or something like that. And then in that same, I guess, when Councilmember Rue Landau was asking questions, you then started to spout numbers, I don't know if it was Rue, whoever it was, you then started to spout numbers about how your owners give, right, throughout the years periodically, $4 million here, $5 million there, whatever, right? And I'm just thinking about that number as a, if $300 million is, doesn't make this project unviable or economically non-viable over a 30-year period, I'm just looking at it, that's only $10 million a year over a 30-year period. But if you add up what your owners give each year, it's probably gonna be more than that $10 million. And if we take a look at what the Sixers' value would be after getting this arena, I'm gonna estimate the value to be $6 billion, because right now, 4% you, 4.6, you get arena, you own it, you'll be at $6 billion. So you're telling me $10 million a year over a 30-year period for a $6 billion company makes this project economically unviable? Like that's, that's your, that's your stance on this?
Yes.
So in a, in a city where we have the, of course, we are the largest, poorest city in the country, right? So that means we spend a lot more money on services that other cities may not have to provide. And so when we are spending this money on services related to your potential arena, then that's money coming out of our general fund money and things like that. And so I just kind of, I find it, I don't know, not offensive, but a little bit worrying that a $6 billion company will say that $10 million over a 30-year period makes something unfeasible essentially, when, you know, when their partners are already spending this amount of money charitably, right, and getting write-offs for it, right, and all these other things. So I just, I just find that a little, I don't know, I just don't think that that's a truthful statement.
So appreciate that, and I'll just maybe offer some context, maybe it will clarify, maybe not. But the, I think it's important that we look at this in the totality of what this project would offer. So this would be a $1.3 billion investment without taking any city money, which is definitely the exception when it comes to professional sports venues. That would be creating, based on our estimates, a roughly...
I think that's becoming the norm now, not the exception, right? So I think as, as cities are becoming more, I guess, I guess, more educated on this process, right, the norm is for these sports franchises now to build them themselves.
Just as one example, Oklahoma City is building a new arena that costs roughly $950 million. The city of Oklahoma City is paying $900 million of that, and the team is paying $50 million.
It's Oklahoma, I mean, it's Oklahoma. It's Oklahoma, like, this is the fifth-largest market in the, in the country, right? So we have to look at that and say, we're the fifth-largest market in the country. Who doesn't wanna come and play here in the fifth-largest market in the country? We have every major sports franchise in this, in this area because of that, because the revenue is there, the market share is there. The market share is not there in Oklahoma City.
And every professional sports franchise that has been built in this city to date has received local subsidies.
And I think that's, that's in the past, right? That's in the past, that's because people were, I'm not gonna assume why they did it in the past, but we're looking at the, the future of how franchises, sports franchises are developing their spaces now. And when we look at it, yes, you're gonna have an outlier when the market isn't there, right, because they wanna create that market. But in cities like Philadelphia, San Francisco, other places, the market is there already. So when the market is there, it allows the city to really take full advantage of what its value is. And I think, as I've been saying throughout this entire process, we're not getting our full value with the current deal, and I'm glad to hear that you're now willing to move forward with discussing the CBA. But again, the number that, if you're telling me that $10 million a year over a 30-year period makes this project unattainable, I just think that, you know, y'all, I can go back and do a little bit more math on that, because as a businessperson, right, if you're, if, in any business industry, if you're telling me that six, $10 million to $6 billion, or whatever it is the number will be, if you're telling me that drop in the bucket makes this project unattainable, then that means you shouldn't be doing it in the first place, then. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. And that brings up an important point. If you could, Mr. Goo, go back over the involvement that you all said that you had, because when I looked at the numbers, I just jotted down some of what you mentioned. And you, you know, it seems to me that you all are over $10 million in investment based on what you said earlier, so.
Sure. So I haven't done the math, but if, if that is the case, those are all things that we plan to continue doing and as a good corporate citizen in the city. And the community benefits agreement would be in addition to the things that we already do.
So if you're already, if you've made a commitment that you're gonna continue to do these things, why not memorialize it in the CBA?
Sure. I think because our approach has always been that... I think because our approach has always been that we are, the CBA is on top of things that we already do as our, as our normal course of business. We plan to continue to be good corporate citizens. What we do and how we direct our philanthropic funding each year changes depending on the needs of the city, depending on, you know, what requests we get and what opportunities there are. The CBA, as we understand it, is really focused on address-
Well, let me just say, let me just say this, I'm sorry, I don't mean to cut you off, but-
No, no, no problem.
I'm not, I'm not particularly impressed, and I said that before-
Okay.
-with what has been done. And so if, if, if this is sort of like your baseline that you're doing now, if you want to do above and beyond that, fantastic. But I think that, you know, what is your base? What is your bottom line? What is the, the minimum that you all are willing to do? To me, this looks like we're at the minimum of what you all are willing to do. And so looking beyond that, how much more would you be willing to do in the future beyond what you're currently doing? I, I just think that you need to memorialize that in the CBA.
Understood and appreciate it. And, and, and as I mentioned, we are looking at, based on feedback from this body, looking at increasing the CBA as we continue those negotiations. We will obviously keep everybody updated on that, but that is something that we're looking to do.
Looking forward to working on that. Councilwoman Gautier.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to come back around to dig in more on jobs, this time in Philadelphia, not in Camden.
Okay.
The Economic Impact Study states that 710 jobs or FTEs would be created for Philadelphians and 360 more jobs or FTEs for Pennsylvanians. This is the total for the construction period and 30 years of operations. On your website, Seventy-Six DevCo still maintains that the project will create 9,100 direct FTE jobs during construction and 1,000 direct FTE jobs during operations. So I want to understand these numbers a little more. So first, can you state on record how many full-time jobs you expect to be created during the construction phase? And how many full-time jobs do you expect to be created during operations? Also, when you count jobs, what's the shortest amount of time a person can work on your site and still have that count as a job? Is that a day, or is that, what length of time that is, is that in order to be counted? And then lastly, can you explain your methodology for how you arrived at the number of jobs that are being pledged?
Sure. So starting with the last piece, I'd like to call Lee Wang up from E-Consult, who did our economic impact analysis.
Lee Wang, Principal at E-Consult Solutions. Mr. Gould and I will tag-team your question. You asked about methodology concerning the job impact number that is featured on the website, and, and then you also asked about direct jobs. So I'm going to ask Mr. Gould to talk about direct jobs, I'll talk about methodology. Anytime you have any sort of economic activity, such as the construction of an arena or the operations of an arena, you will directly employ people, and those people in turn will make money and spend a portion of that money back into the local economy. These activities also require various goods and services to be procured, and some of those goods and services will be procured from local Philadelphia-based businesses, which support those businesses and the employees that those businesses employ. So using our models, E-Consult Solutions does a lot of economic impact modeling, including here in Philadelphia, for things like construction projects and arenas and what have you. And so we're looking at the industry distribution of what happens when you spend X millions, or in this case, billions of dollars, on the construction of a facility, and then you operate it, and trying to figure out the geographic distribution of where that money goes as far as people making money, and then spending a portion of it back into the local economy, goods and services being procured, including from Philadelphia-based businesses, and our estimate is what appears on the website. That is above and beyond the direct jobs, because it reflects this spillover impact that happens in it, in a interconnected industry where one expenditure leads to many other expenditures.
Thank you. If David can sort of detail those numbers.
Yeah, so the, and I just referenced the numbers that you, that you laid out in terms of the, the direct employment through the arena, and just to clarify in terms of your question around, I believe Councilmember was, like, what qual, like, how, how much does somebody have a job, right? So, like, how, how much do they have to work to have a job?
Yes.
Right, so, so arena operations is a combination of full-time and part-time jobs. As you can imagine, there are some responsibilities that are, you know, a, a full-time job, and there are other jobs that are much more event-based. And so the numbers that you referenced were full-time equivalent, I believe, and so it is a combination of, if you take, this is very rough, but if you take all the, the people working and the number of hours that they work a year, how many full-time equivalent jobs would that be, which I would assume is roughly, you know, assuming a, you know, 40-hour work week? So that, that would be the equivalent of that. In terms of the number of individuals that would have a job, somewhere that would be employed by us, it would be much larger, but what you were referencing, I believe, were the full-time equivalent jobs. So hopefully that answered your question, but.
Can you just detail those numbers one more time in terms of the full-time jobs during both phases? And then I'll just tack on, what will go differently here than in Camden?
Sure. So speaking on the last piece, I think there, there's a couple of things. One is, when we built the Camden facility, those weren't all just like new jobs that, you know, appeared out of nowhere. We moved our operations to that facility, so it wasn't as if there were like a bunch of openings that were just created as, as a result of that. So that's one thing that's different here, because we don't currently operate an arena, right? And so the jobs that we're creating would be new jobs that aren't currently filled. So that, that's one piece of it. The other piece, as I mentioned, is the jobs in Camden will be much more accessible to a wider range of people, in this case, Philadelphians, than, than what our current operations and the, the types of roles and responsibilities required for our Camden operations are. Lastly, I think, you know, we have a, I think, a very strong and laudable economic opportunity plan here, which did not exist in Camden, and, and there are commitments that are laid out in that as well, as well as the, the enforcement mechanisms.
And the numbers, sorry.
Yeah, the, so I was, I was just referencing the numbers from the, from the Economic Impact Report in terms of the FTE, so I don't have those at my fingertips, but I can, or you.
Yeah, so our estimates, which Lee can speak to, are based on E-Consult's report. It's 9,000 FTE jobs during construction and 1,000 FTE jobs during operations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council Lady. Question for you, Unite Here, where are we with those negotiations?
I'm sorry.
Unite Here.
Unite Here, yes. We are, we continue to be in conversations with Unite Here. I believe we have the, we are close. I can't speak to the, the details, but of, you know, the negotiations as they're, as they're active. But one thing that I can commit to this body is that we are committed to union labor within the arena, including the concession jobs which Unite Here represents.
Well, my question is, how close are you? Is this like today, tomorrow, you know, here we are at the finish line?
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I can't speak for them in terms of like how, how, I believe we are very close. Again, I can't get into the details and the minutia of these negotiations, but we are, we are very close, and that's what I can share today.
I think that that's something that's going to be essential to us being able to, you know, make a decision about moving forward, so, you know, it's, it's got to be done.
Understood.
And to be honest, I don't want to admonish you, but it really should have been done at this point, I think, you know, it's kind of late. Councilman, Chair recognizes Councilman O'Rourke.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're all rece, we're all relieved that Governor Shapiro stepped in to help address SEPTA's dire funding situation in the short term. Doesn't fix the underlying crisis SEPTA faces, though. The success of more than just a basketball arena is in line here, more than half a million Philadelphians ride SEPTA every day, as we emphasize. Have the Sixers come to an agreement with SEPTA regarding appropriate levels of funding for both capital and operational costs? I know you answered some of this already, but just for my line of questioning. Have the Sixers come to an agreement with SEPTA regarding appropriate levels of funding for both capital and operational costs?
With regards to capital costs, we have committed to maintaining, or to paying for the cost of construction within Jefferson Station required because of the arena.
Operational costs?
Operational costs, our position remains the same.
What is the contribution for the record, and where are the rest of the funds coming from?
I'm sorry, I don't-
What is the Sixers' contribution, and where are the, what is the actual contribution, and where are the rest of the funds, where would the rest of the funds be coming from?
When you say contribution, can you clarify, Councilmember, contribution to, to what?
As relates to the capital and operational costs. You said, you've already given the number, I'm just getting it for the record. Appropriate levels of funding for both capital and operational costs, what is the actual contribution that you've made, that you committed to?
Yes, so it's not a, a specific number or contribution, it's a cost that our contractors have included in the budgeting process, that they are accounting for on, on our construction estimates, so that's a cost that we would pay. The current estimates are, are north of $10 million. That's going to move up and down as plans continue to get finalized, but we're carrying many millions of dollars on our side of the ledger for the construction impacts.
Just wanted to get on the record, let me ask also, the administration has confirmed for, this is an admin question, this is, the administration has confirmed for the council that they have not seen any engineering plans for the arena, which has been concerning to us. Do you have a timeline for releasing a full engineering plan for the arena?
I'm sorry, sit again, the timeline for the releasing, which plan?
As it relates to the actual SEPTA situation, Jefferson Station and all that, do you actually have a timeline? We don't have a plan, right, for any of this? Do you have a timeline for releasing a plan that people can see?
We do not have a current plan that, or timeline for a release of a current plan, but we remain in active dialogue with SEPTA as recently as yesterday afternoon, as recently as this afternoon, next week. We're continuing to meet with them along with the city, and will continue to do so.
Earlier today, I heard the bill, this is my last one, earlier today, I heard you tell Councilmember Jones that the Sixers had control of some property south of Market in the vicinity of the arena. And to my colleagues, you might recall that last time they were here, I asked our Sixers' representatives about a company called Surge that Harris Blitzer, as an early investor, that was just started by the former head of Seventy-Six DevCor, John Facatelli. Surge is a company premised on master planning and unlocking real estate around arenas. I mention this because frankly, I think there's a whole other revenue stream tied to this project that isn't being discussed at all, one that makes the CBA even smaller in comparison. So my questions are, this one's for the Sixers, you said earlier that $300 million would make this project no longer financially viable, as Councilman Young lifted up, but when you, but when you are calculating viability, are you taking into account the revenue from properties around the arena?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Young.
Thank you. So I just have a question about the operations that you have in Newark, New Jersey, or the Prudential Center. The Prudential Center has a bunch of like open-air parking lots around it. Do, does your company own those parking lots as well?
We do not.
You do not own those parking lots? And this is to give you a background, I went to law school in Newark around this time when this was opened up, so this was like a hot topic, right, up there, so. And the whole talk about the Prudential Center was the opportunity for other development to happen around it, right? And because you do not own those parking lots, right, and I'm sure the, when there's an event at the Prudential Center, that, those lots generate revenue for whoever owns those lots.
Sure.
And I'm looking at East Market and just thinking about the stuff that's around there that we potentially want to develop, like, what's keeping, I think that this, if this arena gets built, I, I think it only incentivizes those owners of those lands to keep that property as open-air parking lots, because they know that they're going to get this guaranteed revenue with little, little amount of energy associated with, with that land, so what, like, can you just talk to us about-
Sure.
-what you think that plan would be?
Yeah, no, it's, it's a very good question. So I think there's a difference between the current context on East Market Street versus what we know to be true in Newark right now. To your point, there are a variety of open-air parking lots around the Prudential Center. You know, those parking operators, I'm sure, are very happy with the revenue that they generate from our events. We've been, one, one difference is that we do own parcels across the street, or we will own parcels across the street, so we actually have control of parcels that we can develop, but that is not necessarily the case in Newark. Secondly, in conversation with the other stakeholders that are property owners in the area, they have all expressed, and as they've testified here in front of council, I believe it was last week or two weeks ago, they're very excited about the prospect of this arena, because it will allow them to develop in ways that they haven't been able to. One example of that is one of the open-air parking lots down there, which is the, as we all know, the Disney Quest site, right? It's been a parking lot for, I think in many Philadelphians' opinion, far too long, and Goldenberg has said, "We need a catalytic investment along Market Street like this to allow us to be able to finance and build a viable project along this corridor." We also have a, a lot of buildings right now that aren't generating much revenue for anybody, because they're sitting vacant. So when you look at East Market Street and the south side of Market Street, there's a lot of vacancy that there's not any economic activity going on, and so this would bring more people down there, that would make, you know, those projects far more financeable and viable.
And, and so I, I understand that, that sentiment, but they, they said a project like this, right? So not necessarily this, and I think that's been the contention of a lot of our, some members anyway, is that, you know, what are the alternatives to, not saying that this is, not saying that this is like a horrible, horrible project, not saying it's horrible, the deal is horrible, but, but essentially, along East Market Street, I mean, something can go there to, to, to spur the same type of development that we're looking for along that East Market corridor to, to help our city in, in general. So I, I, and to, and knowing that, I just think that we should be careful in, in, in limiting ourselves to what the potential of East Market is, and I think that these conversations have always limited us to what, you know, it, it could be with, with an arena. And I understand they say it, it may, it may do this, it may do that, but we don't have timelines for all of that stuff, right? We don't know, right? We don't know the market, you know, what the market's going to look like in five, six years when, if the arena gets built, to say that those property owners are going to want to keep, or want to want to develop something on those lots, when easy money is easy money, you don't buy, it's hard to turn that down when it comes to these arenas, when you, when you, when you know there is a market for parking right there. There's an absolute marking, a market for parking, when you have to, when you, when you believe that 40% of your riders are going to take public transportation or whatever, it has to get to that point. It's not going to be overnight, so it's going to have to adjust to that at some point, and so we're, we're going to be dealing with that, those issues, those, those traffic issues, those quality of life issues, we're going to be dealing with that for some time until the market adjusts to the public transportation use and things like that. So, and again, that's why I'm pushing for this higher number, because it can help mitigate some of those things that, that are going to happen when this arena opens, so. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilmen. It is now 12:30, or 12, almost 12:30, 12:28. Mr. President? We're going to stand in recess until 2 PM. Okay, thank you.